All right, well, welcome, everybody. This is the Conservation Commission's meeting for Wednesday, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're called to order today at seven oh three. And I know that Patty will not be coming tonight. Do I hear a motion to seat Nora?
I make a motion to seat Nora for Patty.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, guys. Um, any opposition? All in favor? Okay, thanks. All right, let me just write this down. Okay, approval of minutes. We have minutes from three, three meetings, a regular meeting on November fifteenth. I had sent out all that information to you quite a while ago. Does anybody want to make a motion on November fifteenth minute, minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes of November fifteenth as presented.
Second? Anybody want to second that?
I will second them.
Okay, thanks Nora. Any discussion about the minutes from the fifteenth? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so moved, thanks. And then for special meetings, we had on November twenty-eighth, that was the site walk that we took with Austin. And also looking at the open space property off of Meadow Lane. Now Jackie's not here tonight. She was part of that and Patty as well. So it was myself, Patty, wasn't actually an official meeting because we didn't have a quorum. It was more of a site walk, so we can table that if you would like, since they're not here.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay, we'll table those minutes. And then our special meeting from December sixth. I think most of you were there. Do I hear a motion on the sixth?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay Nora, thank you. Any discussion on the sixth, the minutes from the sixth? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, abstained, so moved. Okay, thank you. All right, um, I don't know if Matt, you want to say anything to, what's up? You wanna, we have present to speak. If you wanna say anything tonight, you're welcome to do that.
I don't have anything to contribute other than thanks for volunteering for the Conservation Commission. Look forward to learning what you do here.
Thank you, Matt. Under Finance, Carol, how are we doing with our?
We're doing fine, I think. I, I believe, the, the, the only expenses we've had since in December were the, for, for the basket for the library fundraiser. And it came to a hundred and ten dollars and twelve cents with shipping. And I believe that's been paid.
So what would, do you have a balance for us now, Carol? What's our?
Nine hundred and five dollars and sixteen cents remaining.
Okay, thank you. All right. And we did not spend any money from the ARPA fund since the last time we had some expenditures at O.L. Willards. Carol, do you know what the final was on O.L. Willards? Because they sometimes give that discount.
Um, no, and I don't, you know, I, I did. I, I can, I can check with Rashine, I probably should. I didn't think about. I'll make a note to, to talk to her about that.
Okay, I'm sure it's just a few pennies, you know, it's not a big deal.
No, but it'd be nice to know, you know, keep, keep track of the ARPA money.
Okay, great. Okay, um. I have, under new business, we're gonna talk about our CIP requests, but I was wondering if we wanted just to, under finance, talk a little bit about our annual budget request, which probably will be due in February. Is that correct, Carol?
Actually, it's, it's January sixteenth is when they're gonna.
Oh, for CIP or?
Oh, CIP, I'm sorry. Well, well, ARPA?
No, for our annual budget.
I don't know. I haven't heard anything about the annual budget.
Okay.
I know that CIP requests are gonna be due on January sixteenth.
Okay.
And I don't think I have a, I have to set up an account, some kind of an account with gov.org or something, I don't know. I, I have, I was having trouble trying to access the, the CIP stuff because I don't know if I have the proper authorization to get in to do that.
Okay.
I'm, whatever new format they have, I haven't used before, so we'll have to follow up and find out.
Okay.
I don't, do you have a note, an account? Have you looked at that?
Yeah, I've used it in the past because last year I did our CIP request and the ARPA request. And it's, you, it's not hard, you just have to set up a password to get into it.
Yeah.
And then it's an account that you can use for any of our budget requests.
Yeah.
So.
So Kathy, could you, I don't know if I have, could you send me a copy of what you submitted last year?
I believe I did, Carol.
I probably do. I probably, I probably have it someplace.
Yeah, I can send, you talk about the CIP request from last year. Yeah, I can send you what we had. I, I thought I did last year, but I'll send it again. I thought I sent it out to everybody.
Maybe. Maybe I just didn't copy it.
Okay, so last year our annual budget was for fifteen hundred, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our budget is fifteen and we kept it, it's been pretty, pretty much fifteen for almost forever.
Yep.
Since I've been on, which is twenty-five years or something like that. So, yeah.
Yeah.
And last year, we got a lot done with a, with a fairly small amount of money, so.
Definitely. And last year we spent it down to the penny.
Pretty close.
Yeah, so we have nine hundred remaining now to spend until the end of June.
Yep.
Um, and we have some ARPA money if we need to buy materials for the park or trails. So that's good. For our annual budget for next year, do people, and we don't have to vote on this tonight, but let's just, maybe just think about it in case there's some things you think of between now and our January meeting, because typically we have to get it in for February. So if there's some other expenditures that you think might come up this year that are out of the ordinary. Does anybody have some thoughts now, or we can talk about it next meeting?
Well, I think we have to be aware of what we asked for last year, moving forward for five years.
You're talking about CIP right now?
CIP.
Yeah, I'm not quite there yet, Bob. I'm talking about our annual budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's okay. But we'll get there. It's on my under new business, so.
Now Kathy, how much, what was the total amount of ARPA money we had?
Thirty-five hundred dollars. Yeah, we spent about three, approximately three hundred and forty dollars so far. But we have until two thousand and twenty-six to spend that money, so. And, you know, we know we have some other bridges and things to repair and replace out at Fenton Ruby. So we'll be doing that this year with that, some of that money, too.
Right, but that also means we'll be, we'll be probably be spending somewhat less from our operating budget than we normally would.
Possibly.
And it to the ARPA funds.
Yep. One of the things, if you remember that Steve Jones had come to talk to us from the library, he's the programmer, about collaborating more on some events and programs that they host at the library that are related to conservation, particularly this summer, their theme is conservation. So he did mention to me in an email, he's coming back in February. He has contacted Horizon, Horizon Wings. And they have a program that they can provide to the library. It would cost two hundred and seventy-five dollars. They bring in several raptors, you know, owls and hawks and things like that. And they talk about, you know, what the birds' needs are, you know, whether or not these birds are threatened or endangered, how people can help, you know, protect these, these birds. So that's something he's gonna come to talk to us about in February. But that's a, what I'm trying to say is those are things we can think about partnering with the library because it's a great way to have educational programs for people related to conservation.
Yeah, we've had Horizon Wings, but, but mostly outdoors at the park when, when they've done programs for us before. So yeah, I think it's a great, it would be a great idea to cross share with that.
Okay, all right. So, all right, we'll just keep some thoughts in mind when we get together again in January. If there's anything that you can think of that we should add into our annual budget request, we can do it at that point. Under new business, I'm gonna move on, election of officers for two thousand and twenty-four. Is there anyone that wants to make a motion about the Office of Chair, Chairman?
I move Kathy Demarsby Chair.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks Nora. And discussion, I'm willing to continue on as your chairman at this point, so I'd be honored to be your chair. So do I hear? So we'll vote on that if there's no more discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Abstained? So moved, thank you. Okay, and then Vice Chair, do I hear a motion for Vice Chair?
I move Bob Shabbitt for Vice Chair.
Do I hear a second? Norris, wait.
I'll second that.
Okay, Bob, how do you feel about that?
Not, not, not receptive. And let, let me explain. Last night, I was elected Vice Chair of PZC. And I believe that I need to maintain a certain distance with my involvement with the Conservation Commission and my obligation with PZC. So I'd like to keep, I'd like to maintain the buffer that I have right now, if you bear with me.
Okay.
Respectfully decline. And I understand the reasons. Fully. Just a thought, Bob.
No, I, 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 I understand that. And I, if if it wasn't for PZC's commitment, I, I would, you know, I would have agreed to that this year.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
I'm not going away.
No, good. We want you, we want you on the team.
Can we nominate somebody that's not here?
You could. It might be.
Underhanded.
We can, we can.
What about Matt?
And we can table that if we need to, but, yeah. I mean, you can, I believe you can vote on election of officers. Usually we do at the beginning of the year, but if somebody wants to step up to an open office position, I think you can do that at any point. So.
Yeah, can always fill vacancies.
Yeah.
Luckily, a lot of commissions don't have formal officers. I think we're, you know.
That's true, Carol, yeah. So maybe we can wait on that, Nora. It, it's up to you. If you want to make a motion, we certainly can throw it on the table, so.
I don't want to throw somebody under the bus there.
Surprise. Okay, and how about for Treasurer? Your motion for Treasurer?
I nominate Carol.
Okay, here a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and Carol, are you willing to hang in there with us?
Sure, why not?
You do a great job. Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Abstained, or excuse me, opposed, abstained, so moved. Okay, and then how about Secretary? Anybody want to make a motion on Secretary?
My only comment would be, I know it's very different. I think it's not as difficult a job as it might appear because we do have, have a history of having our agendas and our, our, a format for our minutes that, that is not that difficult to follow. If we are not able to find somebody to be Secretary, I would strongly suggest that people seriously consider being willing to do it on a rotating basis because it's not fair to the Chair to have to do the minutes. And, and I, I just don't think that's appropriate. And, and also I think it's, it's a good way to get some involvement with the ability to follow your minutes remotely. It's so much, it's a much easier job than it used to be when you had had to have your minutes to the town office building in person within two days. It's, it, the remote access has made it much, a much less burdensome job than it used to be. So I just throw that out for consideration because it's difficult to chair a meeting and take the minutes at the same time. And others have not been, don't seem to be interested in stepping up. And I, I think that's, that's an important role. And it's something that, that also gives you, people, an opportunity to, to become better, more knowledgeable about the workings of the commission. Just throw that out for, for what it's worth.
Yeah. Well, we can, again, we can think about that at each meeting. And, and I would appreciate if somebody would be interested in taking that position, or at least maybe helping out to take minutes at certain meetings. Carol's right. I mean, there's pretty much a template for the minutes because our agendas are pretty standard. And you certainly, you know, I tend to be very wordy when I write my minutes. You don't have to be that wordy, so you don't have to follow what I do for minutes. We, we're not a board that carries a lot of weight in terms of making financial decisions or anything for the town. So you know, recording what we do is important, but we don't have to be as detailed perhaps as I write my minutes. Just something to think about. Okay, moving on, CIP requests. Now, Bob.
Well, I, I just, if, if everybody has remembered what we asked for last year, we asked for thirty thousand dollars a year for the five years. And last year, for the first year, they awarded us, I guess is a good term, twenty-five thousand. But I certainly believe that we should be consistent and ask again for the thirty thousand moving forward. And again, when Kathy and I went and presented to CIP last year, we, you know, we filled everybody in, you know, why it's important to have the money on hand for the surveys, for the lawyers, for all the things that, you know, people don't stop to realize when we're, when we come upon a piece of property and try to acquire it for open space for the town. What else can I say? I think, you know, I, I, I just bring up in what we brought up to the CIP Committee last year was that if we would have had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on hand, we could have purchased the thirty-five acres that are adjacent to Fenton Ruby Park. Yeah, it went on the market for almost three hundred thousand, but that's not what it sold for. And it's, it's, it's unfortunate. And, you know, I, I have to appreciate and respect the towns' boards for, yes, they find the money for us in the past whenever we've found a piece of property. But that process takes two to two and a half years. And most people don't want to wait those two or two and a half years, which it's, it's a ridiculous amount of time. So, you know, I, I, you know, I'm more than willing to go with Kathy and take and run the gauntlet with CIP and then Board of Finance and let them know where we're coming from and why. And just make that strong case of, you know, we missed out on thirty-some acre, thirty-six acres adjacent because we didn't have the money.
Yeah, well, and, and it does, the process doesn't always take that long. Depends on circumstances and the cost of a pro- property. We may or may, may not want, choose to apply for, applying to the state for a deep grant is what takes the time. And in particular, the last time we, last process with deep was very extended because they kept extending their deadlines and it was an extremely difficult and time-consuming process. But if we have enough, if we'd have a hundred and twenty-five, doesn't, sounds like a lot of money, but for purchasing a property of that size, it would have, we would not necessarily have had to rely on applying for state funding. I would also point out that the current plan is a five-year plan, and there is still thirty thousand dollars in for years two through five each year for open space acquisition. So I guess my recommendation would be that we, we put in for continuing that into the fifth year of the new plan.
I agree, yeah. It doesn't hurt to show up, Carol, and reiterate our, you know, our needs and why.
Of course not, absolutely not. And it's, because many towns have already in place monies set aside for open space. So when a property comes up, they already have a source of funding that they can fall back on and that the townspeople expect that, that will be used specifically for the purpose of, of open space acquisition. And the real issue is that many times when properties become available for circumstances such as going into an estate or something of that kind, where you, if you don't act in a timely way, you miss out on opportunities. Just because of lack of funding.
The other thing I think, having, you know, some comfort of some money in a, in a fund is that you can approach landowners with some idea that you'd be able to make good on being able to say, hey, we've identified your property as something that be, would be a very important priority for the town because it would connect with this open space or it has these natural resource features that are important to the town. You know, if you don't have any money in a budget, it's very hard to feel comfortable approaching somebody to say the town might be interested in, you know, working with you to, to purchase your property or to have to work with you to put an easement on the property so it doesn't get developed down the road. You know, so having a bucket of, some cushion of money is very important. I believe that we have about ninety thousand in that open space fund now. And some of that was because of money that came back from the grant was returned to the open space fund. We also had some in lieu of money that came back from subdivisions that were finally, you know, the houses were built. I'm trying to think of some of the other, there was twenty-five thousand, as you said, Bob, that was put into the open space fund this year, so that went toward that ninety thousand. But if we do continue to pursue the Pettix property, given that we're gonna have to pay, we already paid for the appraisal. We'd have attorney fees, we would have funds that we'd have to put out to purchase the property. And, you know, we're looking at, the appraisal on that was thirty-five thousand dollars. So if, if we moved forward on that, potentially that money would come out of the open space fund. So.
Actually, I have figures on, as of September fifteenth of this year, there was ninety-five thousand in the open space fund. Ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, according to Donna.
Great, okay, thanks Carol for that update. So, so Bob and Carol, I hear you saying the same thing. Let's move forward to ask them to continue to put thirty thousand in for the next five years in the plan. Any other comments? Nora, do you have any thoughts or things you wanted to add?
Sounds pretty safe by continuing with that from my perspective.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion regarding our request?
So moved.
A second? Okay, thanks Carol. All right, so in terms of how I'm going to write this up, let me know how this sounds then. The Conservation Commission recommends that CIP appropriate thirty thousand dollars annually for the next five years for the open space fund. Does anyone wanna?
Sounds good.
End that?
Sounds fine.
That sounds good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So, thank you, guys. All right. On to old business. The Wilford Farms, Hall Forestry Project on the conservation easement portion of the Wilford Farms. We had heard from Austin Harmon, I think that's his last name, Austin Harmon had come out from Hall and described what they wanted to do. We went out, we did the site walk, we discussed some possible changes to their plan, including increasing the buffer for the vernal pool from twenty to thirty feet is what they had originally proposed. And we, we asked for fifty, which was keeping with inland wetlands recommendations. And Mr. Harmon did revise his plan. I had sent it out to you for comments. Everybody seemed to think that that was okay. And we wrote a letter to Inland Wetlands and said that we were recommending that they approve the timber harvest within the CE because they had to look at the whole property. But that we, that the only thing that we were recommending was what they were doing within the conservation easement. And Inland Wetlands did approve their forestry plan Monday night. Now they have to go to planning and zoning because planning and zoning was officially identified in the conservation easement originally as the, the commission that would make any decisions about activity. So we'll bring our recommendation forward to planning and zoning. And then it'll be going to the Board of Selectmen because Hall needs to go from Meadow Lane over an old woods road they want to use like they did ten years ago for the harvest. They want to go across that woods road that's on the town's open space property. So they have to go to the Board of Selectmen to ask for a right-of-way agreement to do that. So we'll, we can also be sending our recommendations then. Yep, Bob?
They came before PZC last night.
Oh.
And
Okay, Mike didn't tell me that.
I was surprised you weren't on screen last night, but.
I had no idea.
I battled the evil empire and gave them the whole nine yards about our take and how well that Hall had worked with us. And I reassured them that there were no red flags that we thought it would be, it was a right thing to do is to vote yes, which they did last night. And so that's, that's done. The only people they have to go and see are the Selectmen now for that right on the right-of-way.
Okay, great. Well, I'll be looking for that then on their agenda. I thought Mike Damato was gonna let me know when they were coming up before planning and zoning. And I didn't actually see any agenda go out for PZC. Did that happen?
Yeah, it did.
It did?
Yeah, I got you, I had you covered last night, Kathy.
Okay, well, no, I know you get it. Thank you, and I appreciate that, Bob. And that's why I'm glad that you serve on both commissions. But, yeah, I didn't see anything. The listserv usually comes out and I'm on that and I didn't see anything from planning and zoning. So I know they had some challenges on Monday with the storm. Lost power, lost internet connection, so maybe that's why it didn't go out.
Okay.
But thank you for being there for us. So Properties Management, Fenton Ruby Park. A few of you probably knew. Well, maybe you didn't. That bridge that's on Taylor Pond Trail that's closer to the Ruby Trail side, the bridge that had washed away, was it maybe two years ago, Bob?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. And we had built a new bridge and then we tethered it so that if it got washed down, it wouldn't go all the way down the, the stream. So that happened. It did what it was supposed to do, the tether. down, it wouldn't go all the way down the the stream. So that happened, it did what it was supposed to do, the tether kept it from going down the stream and um Bob and Chris and I and Patty went out today and we put it back in place. Um, hopefully we made it even better, huh, Bob?
Uh, yeah, I think so. We'll see.
Okay. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else to report on Fenton Ruby. Um, the Boy Scout Bridge looks fine, the Beaver Dam is fine, nothing got breached with all that rain, which is pretty amazing. Um, little soggy out there on the trails, but otherwise intact. Um, I did hear from one of our stewards, uh Kane Gravlin, who is the steward for the Ruby Trail. He said he's gonna have to decline stewarding this year because um of some family issues. So we'll be looking for another steward for that trail. Um, Carol, I know you had mentioned somebody that you thought might be interested.
Um, it's Chris McLean who lives up on uh Lustig Road.
Okay.
Did he walks his dog, he walks his dog at the park every day. I don't know whether he, how interested, I I I, I can talk to him by seeing McQuar.
Okay.
You know, on him a little bit, but I know he, I know he uses the park a lot. Whether he'd be interested in doing something like that, I don't know. But, you know, with somebody that maybe we could at least promote, uh approach to see how interested he'd be in and becoming involved with conservation on a one, anyway.
Okay, well, if anybody, um, yeah, if you wanna maybe ask him if he has any interest. The job's a stewarding is really to, you know, we encourage people to walk the trail once a month and to report back to us if there's any problems with bridges or uh encroachment by, you know, some of the shrubs and stuff on the side of the trails. We ask people if they would just take brush cutters out there during the summer and just trim things back a little bit. Um, and maybe participate in some of our Friends of the Park uh maintenance events. But um, you know, th- there's not a lot that they have to do, but.
Do we have a written description of steward responsibilities that you could?
Yeah, I could send it.
Yeah.
I'll do that to, to send it to you.
Cause I haven't really talked to him about it. I just know that that uh that he, that he does use the park on a regular basis and, and I was thought it hit, it might, that might be helpful, but particularly if we were to um acquire the pedics property. He's in that neighborhood.
I see what you're saying, okay. Um, well, you know, if you wanna ask him first and then if if he's not interested, um.
Well, if you could just send me a copy of the trail of the of the stewards um possibilities, that'd be great.
Send it out to everybody and then in case.
Okay, cause I, I might have a few people too, that I can mention it to.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
More the merrier.
Okay, and Knowlton Preserve, I have no updates. Um, the stewards from that area on Knowlton and Talmage. Nobody has gotten to back to me to say there's any concerns.
Matt, did you have a comment?
Maybe I, maybe I could get a copy of that, um.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, and we um ask people to steward all of the trails that the town um has on the open space property, so the ones that are on the Knowlton, the Talmage, and then Fenton Ruby Park. So, thank you. Town development, does anybody have anything to report that would be um something that would conservation should be um alert to or aware of from any of the other commissions in town?
No, it's uh, it's slow right now.
Okay. And collaborative organizational news and communication. I just wanted to mention to people that I did attend a program at the North Central Conservation District. It was really open to residents. They were trying to um ask people particularly who were involved in agriculture to participate, to talk about uh water and soil issues. And I thought I would go just to learn more about what they do. And pleasantly surprised, um, Town of Wellington is one of thirty towns that is under the North Central's uh Conservation District's region. And they're out of Vernon. I don't know if you're familiar with the agricultural center that's there in Vernon, that's where their office is located. And they have actually staff there that are available to help any municipal land use board. Um, if they have questions or concerns, even when it comes down to an application. So if some, a developer is put in an application and we have it concerns about issues with um erosion um, water quality, they will even do a review of the application and comments on it. Um, I did let inland wetlands know that on Monday night when I was there, cause I wasn't sure if they knew about that as a resource. Often developers come in with their own resources, they have their own sci- soil scientist, um and they talk about, you know, uh, the streams, the ponds, the uh wetlands and so on. But we don't have a paid resource person. If somebody comes with an application, we have concerns, we kinda have to scramble um to see what we can do to, you know, look at it ourselves. Often because of the timing of the application, there's only so many days you have with the public hearing. Um, but this would be a nice resource to utilize um when we become aware that there might be a development proposal coming into town or a subdivision, so. Just wanted to keep that on the radar screen. Any other, anybody else know of anything for any of the other organizations? Any news? Okay. Um, the Regional Pollinator Pathway Initiative, things are pretty quiet right now, but they'll probably start back up in the spring. Open space opportunities, as you know, we're still uh working on the pedics property, which is located on Burma Road. Um, on the eastern part of the town. And one of the issues is that Lustig Road in Ashford, which is the main access onto Burma from that side. We found out recently has been discontinued. Uh, when the town of Ashford actually looked back historically, they had discontinued that back in the thirties. Um, they hadn't really been maintaining it. But it had been used for many years, you know, like eighties and nineties, the people that owned the pedics property were going in and out. Getting um through that part of Lustig and then onto Burma to go to their um camp. And um, this piece of property, you know, um, would be a nice addition to the town open space. The issue that we have is that there's an old camp on it that has to be removed and we would need access on Lustig Road to get to Burma to be able to do that. Um, Troy has already been out there and given us an estimate of what it would cost to remove the camp. We've, as you know, we've um had Carl Assamovic, our town engineer, go out and look at the pond and the dam that's there and um give us some feedback on that. Um, so we were kinda hoping to move forward. We had the appraisal done on the property and we were hoping to move forward. But we knew we had to get some final word on the status of the road. Um, and so last we had left it, I had spoken to Erica and she was looking into talking to the town attorney to see if uh, we could contact the landowner. So when that portion of Lustig was discontinued, the budding landowners, basically that road reverted to them. So their property line would be to the middle of the road and there's three owners in Ashford. So we would have to get a right-of-way agreement with them to use that road to get to Burma, to get to the pedics property. So I don't believe that Erica was able to uh move forward on this before she left. Um, I have heard from Mike Damato that she and Troy did go out to look to see if there might be an alternate access by going on, if you know where the um Langhammer Trail comes through the town's Fenton Ruby Park onto Lustig. That property runs behind one of the landowners and you potentially could use that part of Lustig that is still being maintained to get onto the town's property and go behind the other landowner and then back up onto Burma that way. But you'd have to cut a road in there to be able to get the town's equipment um down to the pedic site. So I'm waiting, I'm just waiting to let things settle for the new Board of Selectmen. And then I'm gonna ask to have um an appointment with Peter to talk to him and bring him up to speed on this. Um, and kinda move forward with this, hopefully. I let Mrs. Pedics know what's going on and, you know, she said she's happy to, you know, to wait it out. Um, she understands, you know, how challenging this is to figure things out, so.
It's challenging for her to try and sell the property to anyone else for the same, for the very same reasons. And perhaps, you know, if 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 town, the town ownership for passive use would be um less objectionable to to Ashford and the uh abutting landowners than it would be for a private person to come in.
Right.
There would be the same issues of access for anybody acquiring that property.
Exactly. And Mrs. Pedics wasn't aware that, you know, it had been officially discontinued. I mean, I think they knew it wasn't being maintained um at the time, but there was no official status of the road. And even it took us a while to figure out what the official status says of Burma itself, that partial, that portion of Burma. So um, so I'll um be in touch with um Selectman Tanaka about that and give him a few more weeks to just kinda settle in. Any other o- open space opportunities that people are aware of? Bob, you had started to mention the Pal property.
Yeah, just, I'll just touch on that briefly. Uh, the uh the Pals uh family, or it's an estate now, uh owns uh thirty-six acres on Jared Sparks Road. Uh, it's the site of the Sparks Homestead, i.e. Jared Sparks uh family. And uh I was speaking with uh the town historian who had a conversation with the assessor. Because every time there's a new assessor, the Pal family uh writes to them and queries about the nineteen acres that uh that the town owns adjacent to their thirty-some acres on Jared Sparks. Um, they believe that that land was, should have been their grandfather's when he purchased the property. And it keeps coming up and Mark Palmer, who was the historian, had asked me about that and I said, I, over the years, somewhere I had read that the town took that it for back taxes in the twenties or thirties. So there, our newest assessor got the letter from the Pals, contacted Mark, Mark went into the vault and found that the, wasn't the Pals uh that the property was uh acquired from. It was one or two owners before that who had, was in arrears for a number of properties. So that information, I believe, is being forwarded to the Pals to uh quell this, oh, I think that nineteen acres is ours. I guess, I guess, I guess my point is, is that uh, and it was brought to my attention also that maybe it would be a good idea that the town in, or one of its entities, maybe the Conservation Commission, contact the Pal family with the idea of uh would, you know, if you're ever interested in uh selling the property, would, could the town be, have first refusal? And it would be an interesting piece to have because of the uh Jared Sparks connection. Um, and the Historical Society is hoping to make Jared Sparks an issue in the next number of years, uh along with for the town's three-hundredth, but the uh country's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary coming up as well. Um, and, you know, being able to have ownership of the property and have the homestead accessible to the public. Although it may not be a big thing, it would be something to advertise the town for.
Okay.
Um, and tha- that's, I know, that's, that's what I was talking to Kathy with uh, with Kathy before the meeting. And uh, so that's just, you know, something that we should probably keep our, our eyes on. Uh, the Pals just had the property logged again. I believe they had it logged eight or ten years ago. So obviously they're having it logged so that uh the, it's not a tax burden. Um, and one of the things that I heard from the brother that lives in Vermont who sold his half of the property already, uh he'd be happy to know that the town historian owns half of that. That when the father, when the kids were growing up, the two sons growing up, the father always said, the reason we have this property is to keep it the way it is and to enjoy it the way it is. So both sons had that mindset. Now, if the brother from the Midwest passed that along to his children isn't unknown, or, but maybe it was passed along to them. So in, it may give the town or the Conservation Commission a leg up if we were to approach them and ask about the future of that uh parcel.
It really would hurt to make that contact.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Do you know much more about the property itself, Bob? Have you ever been out on the property? Does it have some um ruins from the homestead or anything?
Yeah, the, the homestead is there, the uh, you can actually stand on the threshold and probably say that, yeah, little Jared Sparks uh, or maybe older Jared Sparks walked on that threshold to get into the house. The, the house uh foundation is there. It's a half cellar foundation. Uh, the well is off just to the right of it. And if you're standing there on the threshold, looking at what would have been the front door, the barn and the carriage shed is off to your left behind you. So um, the, the remnants of the uh farm are there. Uh, the, the, the house itself was sold in the, I believe, in the eighteen sixties, late eighteen sixties for, just for the lumber that was in it.
Are there any other natural resources on the property? Is there a stream, wetlands that you're aware of?
There's, there's uh, there's some wetlands, uh again, closer from where the homestead foundation is towards Jared Sparks that drains down uh towards the, uh, let's see, north east. Um, the land kinda falls off to the side and, you know, it's uh, it's wooded. And as the Pals are doing, they're, they're logging it. And uh, it's, you know, so they've logged twice, it's been managed, the trees that are left are are smaller, but they're straight, you know, for, from the selective cuttings that they've done. And uh, it's adjacent to the nineteen acres that the town owns and that, that nineteen acres could probably be logged now.
Now, all we need to do is acquire the Jared Sparks portrait that's on, that's in the collection of the New Britain Museum of American Art.
Well, the uh thing that's closer to Wellington is there's two professionally uh done. done plaster casts of Jared Sparks. One of them is in the dining hall uh at, on Harvard's campus. And the, the other one is in the Old Town Hall Vault, courtesy of the Wellington Historical Society.
Oh, well, that's nice to know. All right, well, we're gonna have to get, have him unveiled soon.
We'll have, we'll have to do that.
Thanks, Bob. That's a good update. And maybe we can, you know, talk about this and consider if um Conservation Commission might wanna move that forward with the family, you know, send a, a letter of interest at least, um.
Yeah, I think now the person to contact for current contact information is uh the town assessor.
Okay, all right, I'll talk to Carol. Thank you. Any other uh open space opportunities people are aware of or? Okay. All right, um, Wellington Wire is next on our agenda. Uh, Marilyn, I'll put forward a nice article on beavers um, which is going out for the December issue. What, it'll actually be January, February, March issue. And the next one after that will be due at the end of March. And it will be for the months of April, May, and June. Would anybody be interested in writing an article um for the wire on behalf of the commission? It'd be about anything. It doesn't have to necessarily be about trails. It's, it might be a good time to think about pollinators and things, writing something about pollinators since people might be starting to think about um planting and gardening and such.
Maybe salamanders.
Yeah, bernal pools. That's, that would be a great article, too.
It sure would be, hmm.
And who knows all about bernal pools?
Well, you can give it some thought. Um, like I said, the deadline would be the end of March. So um, if it's something somebody wants to do, a one-page article, that would be wonderful. I'll leave it on the agenda for next month. Uh, membership, so the Board of Selectmen, the new Board of Selectmen and their wisdom reappointed Bob, Marilyn, and myself. So we're up for another three years. Um, we're on the team. Um, I did send out the membership list to all of you and asked you to look at it to see if there were any corrections, changes in email, changes in phone and stuff, and nobody's gotten back to me to say that they wanted that change. So as far as I know, that membership list that I sent out is uh good to go. And then we had talked about our twenty twenty-four schedule uh last time. And we decided we're gonna stay with the third Wednesday of each month at seven o'clock and continuing. Well, that's what we can talk about tonight, too, is if people wanna continue on Zoom. Um, if we were to meet in person, I'm not sure we could manage to do it hybrid because um I would be responsible for handling all that, trying to take minutes. It would be way too much for me to do. Um, so I'm not sure we could do the hybrid, but, you know, we could meet in person if, as an option versus Zoom. And we can change month to month, too. I mean, people sometimes opt to wanna stay with Zoom through the winter months. Um, and then switch it back to meeting in person. How do people feel about it?
I think the Zoom is working well for us.
Any other comments? I know it works well for me because I'm away a lot in the summer. Um, it's helpful to have it via Zoom. I, I do miss seeing all of you in person. Uh, luckily I get to see you often out at the park and on the trails and stuff, which is great. We don't tend to have too many visitors. Um. So I'll, I'll put it out for a vote. Um, how many would like it to stay as a Zoom meeting? Say aye.
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 Okay, so everybody's still okay with Zoom? Okay, so I'll send our uh twenty twenty-four schedule to Robin, um, town clerk. Next meeting will be January seventeenth. And we'll be in the new year. Hopefully it's a good year for everybody. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to add tonight that I didn't bring up for the agenda? Okay, going once, twice. All right, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Slow move.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we did it. We did it at seven fifty-nine, according to my computer.
Wow, that's, that's gotta be a record.
No, I made it under the wire.
Be a little chatty or most of the time. The only disadvantage of the Zoom meetings is no chocolates, but.
I know, I know. I don't miss some of, Peter had some really weird candy sometimes. But I do miss the chocolate. Oh.
All right, well, I wish you all the access to our records is, comes in handy once in a while, but um. You know, I think we've all gotten used to Zoom and, and it is a great convenience, particularly with, when people who are serving on boards and commissions ha- are limited in the amount of time they have to give. Uh, it does, it does, uh, I think is, it has advantages for a lot of folks.
And typically backs up to a staff meeting, so for me. So it's two hours after school and then home and eat, eat, and then, so.
Wow. Oh. Oh, and is that gonna stay the same, you think, for this coming year too, Nora, for your staff meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll try to keep our meetings short. Um, you know. All right, well, I hope everybody has good holidays. Nice to see you.
Enjoy. Thank you. Thanks for everything. Good job.
Bye.
Good night.
All right.